I'd like to call to order the February 24th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Chaplain Philip Snodgrass from the County Sheriff's Office will come and bring our invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me pray together. Dear Heavenly Father, this is a day which you have made and we choose to rejoice in it. We are thankful that your mercies are new every morning and we trust in your everlasting love and faithfulness to see us through. Lord, we pray that you would reveal your perfect will to us and that by your grace may it be manifested in us in every action. Lord, we have not forgotten that our lives belong to you and it is for your glory and your honor that we serve, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good morning to everyone. We have kind of a busy morning, but first, we're going to begin our morning by saying thank you to the Mobile County EMA Cold Weather Partners. And if I call your name, if you have a representative, please just come down here. Mobile County EMA, City of Mobile, Salvation Army, Waterfront Rescue Mission, McHemmy Place, and the Mobile County Health Department. There are others that I didn't name. If you were here with one of our cold weather partners, please come on down.
Well, good morning, everyone. It is great to have you here. You know, instead of this being the Mobile County EMA Cold Weather Partners, it probably should be Cold and Snowy Weather Partners, based on what we just went through. We are so happy to have you here today and so appreciative of all of your efforts during this recent snowstorm and in all the time, all the events that we ever have that you step up to the plate to help the citizens of Mobile County. And we're just thrilled to have you here today to let you know how much we appreciate each and every one of you, your organizations, and what you do. So, this resolution reads, "Whereas we, the Mobile County Commission, congratulate the Mobile County EMA Cold Weather Partners for coming together to shelter those in need during the winter storm of the week of January 20th, 2025. The storm was historic for snowfall and the sustained below freezing temperatures meant conditions were life-threatening. And whereas from Sunday, January 19th through Saturday, January 25th, almost 1,000 people were sheltered, more than 3,250 meals were served, and nearly 500 volunteer hours were expended in an unprecedented coordinated sheltering effort. Whereas the Waterfront Rescue Mission coordinated shelter activity, Mobile County Emergency Management Agency supported the cold weather shelter operations of numerous organizations, including the Waterfront Rescue Mission for Men, McHemmy Place for Women, Salvation Army for Men, Central Presbyterian Church for Families with Children and Females, Dauphin Way United Methodist Church for Families with Children and Females, Theodore Church of God for Adults, Bayou Westland Church, Ryan's Refuge for People with Pets, Town of Mount Vernon Senior Center, City of Saraland Safe House, and City of Sims Warming Center. Many of those opened as shelters for the first time and others participated in coordinated shelter efforts for the first time. What a coming together of the communities. Whereas, in addition to the facilities named above, the following are also recognized for their efforts in this coordinated sheltering activity: Wave Transit for waiving fees for transporting to shelters, Mercy Life of Alabama for inter-shelter transport, Healthcare Coalition of Mobile County for support and supplies, Mobile County Health Department for support, U.S. National Reserve Corps of Volunteers and Security, church volunteers, especially for those opening as a shelter and/or coordinating with EMA for the first time, Central Presbyterian Church, Dauphin Way United Methodist Church, Theodore Church of God, and Bayou Westland Church, United 211, United Way, Mobile County Voluntary Organizations Active in Disasters, and Mobile County Department of Public Affairs. And whereas, as a result of the MCE-MA sheltering effort, some of the people who sought shelter were directed services. And now, therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission applauds Mobile County Cold Weather Partners for serving the community during this winter storm. We recognize your commitment and hard work in helping those in need. Your unwavering support and dedication are truly appreciated. Thank you. I'm sorry. One for each organization. So, if you'll come up, if you represent your organization and let me, and we'll give one of these out, and then we'll take pictures.
We have several retirees. Actually, we have a total of 208, 238 years' worth of experience retiring. Our retirees are Mallory Don Davis, Judge of Probate, 24 years. These are the February 1st retirees. Phil Benson, County Treasurer, 11 years and 10 months. Latasha Hitchens, Juvenile Detention Coordinator, 25 years and 2 months, and she's here. Come on down. Vanessa Bailey, Custodial Worker, 26 years. Come on down. Oh, there you are. Brenda Washington, who I believe is here, 39 years and 11 months. Carol Barnes, 35 years, 11 months. Donald Brothers, Public Service Worker, 2, 26 years and 6 months. Bobby G. Jaco... Jacius? Equipment Operator, 3, 30 years and 10 months. And Thomas Owens, Deputy Sheriff, 18 years and 3 months.
Good morning. These all say the same thing. They have each of your names on it. And I want to say that we really appreciate you guys and the hard work that you've put in for the county and dedicated to the citizens of Mobile County. 39 years, wow. Forty, she said forty, forty years. And I know I worked with Tommy. Tommy, not only has he served the Sheriff's Office for 18 years, he also served with the Mobile Police Department for 25 years. So, he's been a cop for just a few minutes. He was, he's stubborn and hard-headed, too, let me tell you. So, but it says here, "The Mobile County Commission presents this," and it has each of your names. And we want to wish, we wish to express our sincere thanks and gratitude for the number of years of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. And we would like to wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. So, thank you, each and every one of you, and those who aren't here today too as well. Thank you.
We'd like to welcome back Arthur Matt with the call news. He's had a little spell of illness, but he's back. All right, I think that's it. You ready?
Uh-oh.
No one signed up to speak this morning.
Thank you for reminding me. I got all excited.
Item 1, approve list of claims. Second. 2, hold public hearing, so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance report.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers for or against? Here and none, the public hearing is now closed.
3, adopt resolution fixing financial charge or tax to be paid by owners of forest lands located in Mobile County for use of the land for timber-growing purposes.
Some move.
Second. 4, approve county levies for alcohol licensing for the fiscal year 2526 in the same amounts as fiscal year 2425 as follows.
Some move.
Second. 5, approve appointment of Erica J. Massey to serve on the Board of Directors of the Kushla Water District Place 4 Malvila for a term of four years.
Some move.
Second. 6, approve agreement with Richard McLafflin for cost allocation plan services related to the cost of operations for Mobile Government Plaza not to exceed the amount of $6,875.
Some move.
Second. 7, award bid to Emerson Roofing for roof replacement for Strickland Youth Center probation building for their total bid in the amount of $77,708.
Some move.
Second. 8, approve sponsorship agreement with Mobile Arts Council in the total amount of $2,500 for its Arties Award Celebration with funds divided as follows.
Some move.
Second. 9, approve appropriation contract with United Methodist Inner City Mission in the amount of $25,000 from District 1 Education Funds for its after-school tutorial and summer enrichment program at Taylor Park Community Center.
Some move.
Second. 10, approve sponsorship agreement with Trinity Gardens Community Civic Club in the amount of $3,500 from District 2 Education Funds for the Trinity Gardens Black Heritage Parade.
Some move.
Second. 11, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $5,000 from District 3 Education Funds for the band program and other school needs at Palmer Pillants Middle School.
Some move.
Second. 12, approve appropriation contract with Scarborough Model Middle School Parent Teacher Association in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 Education Funds to assist with travel expenses to the Legacy Museum and the National Memorial for Peace and Justice in Montgomery.
Some move.
Second. 13, approve sponsorship agreement with Southwest Mobile County Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $2,000 from District 3 Commission Funds for its annual awards gala.
Some move.
Second. 14, approve appropriation contract with Saraland Area Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $20,000 from District 1 Commission Funds for operational expenses.
Some move.
Second. 15, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Area Mardi Gras Association in the amount of $15,000 from District 1 Commission Funds to assist with expenses related to the 2025 Mardi Gras season, subject to paperwork and legal review.
Some move.
Second. 16 was held at conference. 17, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $20,000 from District 2 Education Funds to assist with the cost of special needs playground equipment for Sims Middle School.
Some move.
Second. 18, approve service order with Unity Fiber to provide managed 100 megabits per second Ethernet connection to Bayfront Park in Coden. Monthly reoccurring cost of $585 for a 36-month term and a one-time charge of $7,575 and a managed custom router at no charge.
Some move.
Second. 19, approve agency grant agreement as amended with Alabama Department of Youth Services for fiscal year 2425 in the amount of $1,066,460 for the Transition Continuing Care Program to provide it as a non-residential diversion service for youth with ongoing capacity of 52 youth at any given time within Mobile County.
Some move.
Second. 20, approve appropriation contract with the City of Chickasaw in the amount of $50,000 from District 1 Carryover Funds for its renovation project to replace windows at the Chickasaw Civic Center.
Some move.
Second. 21, authorize acceptance of a sub-receiving agreement from the State of Alabama Emergency Management Agency for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for a first responder safe room in the amount of $4,101,601, which includes an associated county match in the amount of $410,160.10.
Some move.
Second. 22, approve change order number 1 with Jay Hunt Enterprises for Project Chickasaw Park Campground Improvements. The change order will increase the contract by $16,278.40 and increase the contract time by 45 calendar days. The new contract will be in the total amount of $3,544,624.90 and a new date of substantial completion is March 25th, 2025.
Some move.
I don't know what, I know we're probably going to talk about this a little later. I don't know what kind of improvements he could do. That, we had the ribbon-cutting grand opening there yesterday. And Commissioner Ludgood, that is one beautiful part that you have put together up there for the community. It is super nice. I was super impressed and loved it. But, I mean, I know there's other improvements, but it's, it is wonderful.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Second.
Even, even in the inclement weather, I hear there were hundreds of people that came to enjoy and to see.
Tina, do you want to speak to what these, what this covers?
Sorry, Tina, I didn't mean to draw you out.
Good morning. So, this is related to the campground renovation phase of the, of the park improvement project? So, yesterday, we were celebrating the opening of the day use area. And back further that we had closed off is under construction right now, the campground, the RV campground improvements.
Yeah, I'll say a little bit more later.
Yeah, I'm sure. I just, I just could not let that pass by without, I'm, I'm su... And really, it's, some of it's, I'm proud of, and the other part is, I'm really jealous of that playground. It's nice.
I figured he gonna get you one, though.
You and Connie both on those playgrounds, the one at Escataba and, and, which I got a nice playground coming too, but those are really nice. Made me want to play.
We'll share the plans with you.
I don't know. I'm, I'm gonna take yours and yours and merge them together and build one big playground like that.
Now, I tried it out personally. Are you gonna do that on your?
I was too busy dancing, if you recall.
I made the motion.
I second it.
23, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Lewis Landing Public Access Improvements.
Some move.
Second. 24, approve contract amendment number 2 with Ardua Group for Project City of Chickasaw Stewer Rehabilitation Project to add additional engineering and design services.
Some move.
Second. 25, approve purchase of parcel of real property from Mitchell Ellis Products located on Moffett Road in Sims for use as a county garage and maintenance facility for $2,500,000 plus closing cost. And authorize the County Commission President to execute the conditional real estate purchase agreement and other such documents as are necessary pending legal review.
Some move.
Second. And 26, I understand we have a statement?
Yeah, just real quickly, I think there's an audio I would like to play. Mr. Pearson's daughter, who lives in Florida, couldn't be here to speak today, but she sent in an audio recording. And I think Cherie is prepared to play that. And then also today, we have Carrie New here, and she's going to speak real quick about the Alabama Cold Case Advocacy. I know that I spoke about it Thursday, but it's, it's that important that I would like it for everyone to hear Ms. Pearson's words about her father and, and her son and his grandson. And then Carrie's gonna talk a little bit about her organization if we've got just a moment.
Sure.
We'll play the recording. Carrie.
Good morning. My name is Julie Pearson, daughter of Stephen H. Pearson, missing from Grand Bay, Alabama since December 27th, 2000. Daddy would give you the coat off of his back if he needed it, and I know of one time he did exactly that for a stranger. When he disappeared, he had one grandson, my son, that he absolutely adored and doted on, just as grandfathers should do. They had their own routines of pawpaw time together, doing fun things like going and getting biscuits and gravy. Daddy would not have gone missing on his own accord, as he had so many reasons to be excited about the future. His grandson, he had gotten a promotion at work, and so many more things. Grand Bay, Alabama once was a small town, way back then, where most everyone knew most everyone, and if not, they knew somebody who knew somebody. So, someone knows something without any doubt in my mind about Daddy's case, no shadow of a doubt at all. It is imperative to remind them that Daddy is still missed and to please come forward with any information. After 24 years, every detail counts. When Daddy went missing, there was quite the turnout to help search for him. So many knew and liked my dad. It has been a long 24-plus years without answers. It is time for Daddy to come home. Whatever that looks like all these years later, I don't know, but it is past time. Please help spread the word with the billboard about my daddy and help us bring daddy home. Thank you.
Thank you, Cherie. And Carrie, if you want to talk a little bit about this, about your organization specifically and about this particular case?
Again, my name's Carrie New. I started Alabama Cold Case Advocacy in 2022. It started out as a social media effort, essentially, because everybody kind of gets their news on social media now. And it was a way to kind of reach the masses quickly. There are roughly 300 missing persons in Alabama, children and adults. The state database does not correlate with the national database. And so, we know there are names that are missing from both of them. And there's roughly a 70-person difference between the two databases. Not really sure why that is. Part of that is because there is a voluntary reporting. There's no mandated reporting for missing persons. There is roughly 250,000 unsolved homicides across the United States, and it's a number that's expected to grow about 6,000 a year. It's insane. And as a mom, I thought, what would I want if it were my child? I have a son, and I thought I would want all the resources possibly available. And the public is the largest free resource there is, because then you have eyes everywhere. And so, when we started, it was kind of a way to bridge that gap between the families and the law enforcement agencies as far as communication, as far as getting these cases back out in the public's attention. And for families like Stephen Pearson, where it's been over 20 years since they've had any kind of update or anything like that, it is just truly important to them to have people re-engaged and, you know, have their interests sparked again. And so, we're pushing for legislation to have cold case policies and procedures along with mandated reporting. And that was part of why we started the social media effort, was to start a petition to circulate. But then also to have this media outreach where we could do things like have billboards, do basically media blitz where we shared the story across it. And working with the Sheriff's Office here on Stephen's case has been And working with the Sheriff's Office here on Stephen's case has been the perfect example of what that looks like. We've worked collaboratively with Sheriff Birch, um, and his investigator, Mitch Pecory, to get Stephen's case kind of updated, um, get it looked at again. We had a, um, story on Fox Ten not long ago, and then we truly appreciate you guys considering this billboard, because it's going in an area where Stephen was last seen, and anybody that would have information ideally would see it. So, getting more eyes on it is more important, because it just increases the chances that somebody will call. Relationships change over the years, and somebody who may not have come forward then might see it and come forward now. And it just, it serves as a way to encourage people, you know, if you know something, it doesn't matter how small you think it is. Maybe it seems completely irrelevant to you in your mind, but to somebody who has the big picture, to a law enforcement agency who's just missing that one piece to their investigation, it can make a huge difference. So, this is a, a huge deal, and I'm super appreciative for the opportunity that you guys have given us.
Well, thank you, and, um, I'll repeat real quickly what I said on Thursday. The, this case was initially investigated by Sheriff Birch when he was a homicide investigator, and it was later looked at by many sets of eyes, including mine as a cold case. And again, I, like I said, it's, it's tough to go behind Sheriff Birch, because he's a good investigator. Um, but it's, it's the opinion of Sheriff Birch and myself both that, that, uh, a homicide has been committed. That's, that's our professional opinion as law enforcement officers, and I think this serves, uh, two things. Number one, it gives some closure to the Pearson family if we can get to the bottom of this, but also, you have to keep in mind, if there was a homicide committed, that means that the person who committed this homicide is potentially, um, still at large. And, and if you're capable of committing one homicide, I'm under the impression that you're capable of committing another. So, thank you, Carrie, for bringing this to me, and I'm super, uh, happy to, to sponsor this.
Thank you.
With that said.
Three-six, approved sponsorship agreement with Alabama Cold Case Advocacy in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from District Three Commission Funds for a billboard in Grand Bay promoting awareness for the Stephen Pearson Missing Person Case.
Some of.
Second.
Twenty-seven, considers taking the following action on bids?
Some of.
Second.
Twenty-eight, approved renewal of license agreement with GoDaddy.com in the amount of twenty-two dollars and seventeen cents for dot-com domain name renewal for Love Your Community.
Some of.
Second.
Twenty-nine, approved renewal of subscription agreement with Zoom Communications in the amount of two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents for the Zoom Workplace Business Annual for the period of February fifteenth through February fourteenth for the County Commission.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty, approved renewal of maintenance agreement with Passmark Software in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifteen cents for Passmark OS forensic software used for computer forensic evidence storage for the Sheriff's Office.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty-one, approved renewal of license agreement with Netlucent in the Doing Business as Ensemble Group in the amount of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for Gangscope Annual Software Licenses Used to Store and Maintain Criminal Enterprise Data in Compliance with the Bureau of Justice Requirements for the Sheriff's Office.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty-two, approved month-to-month lease agreement with Anytime Storage Mobile for one ten-by-twenty unit to store furnishings for the Dave Patton House project in the amount of three hundred and forty-four dollars per month.
Some of.
Second.
Three-three, approved consenting to the assignment of annual asphalt plant mix bid awarded to Mobile Asphalt Company to Wiregrass Construction Company pending legal review.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty-four, approved consenting to the assignment of annual asphalt, asphalt plant mix bid awarded to H.O. Weaver and Sons to APAC Alabama pending legal review.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty-five, approved supplemental agreement number one with Southern Land Development for Project South Access Improvements at New South Lumber Company for modification to contract pay items, including traffic stripe and drainage items, increasing the contract amount by thirty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and the contract will be in the estimated total amount of one million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty-six, adopted resolution authorizing request of Engineering Department, dispose of certain items from its file room from the fixed assets inventory list to clear a surplus and authorize items to be disposed.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty-seven, approved preliminary plat only of Penny Lake's second addition and preliminary plat only of Penny Lake's third addition.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty-eight, approve, approve preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of lots one and two Miller Acres and preliminary and final plat of Clarence Estates and preliminary and final plat of Ranchview Estates and preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of lot one, Yula Acres.
Some of.
Second.
Thirty-nine, approve assigning contract for professional engineering services for Project Foul River Road at State Route one ninety-three intersection improvements to McCourion Williamson.
Some of.
Second.
Forty, approve assigning contract for professional geotechnical engineering services for Project Foul River Road at State Route one ninety-three intersection improvements to geotechnical engineering testing.
Some of.
Second.
Forty-one, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Track Eight on Moore's Road in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for Project Moore's Road Grade Drain Base and Pave.
Some of.
Second.
Forty-two, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Tracks Eight, Nine, and Ten on Wheatcroft Road North in the amount of five thousand dollars for Project Wheatcroft Road North Grade Drain Base and Pave.
Some of.
Second.
Forty-three, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the below-listed property owners and projects as follows.
Some of.
Second.
Forty-four, approve assigning contract for professional engineering services for Project Town of Dauphin Island Streets Resurfacing to DePlantis Design Group.
Some of.
Second.
Forty-five, approve assigning contract for professional geotechnical engineering services for Project Town of Dauphin Island Streets Resurfacing to Pope Testing Services.
Some of.
Second.
Forty-six, approve functional classification of the below-listed roads as follows.
Some of.
Second.
Forty-seven, approve setting the below-listed speed limits for roads, segments of roads, and subdivisions as follows.
Some of.
Second.
Forty-eight, commission announcements and/or comments?
I, I have a real quick announcement I'd like to make. Really not an announcement. I wanted to talk about some numbers and try to clarify some things on social media pertaining to the Mobile County Animal Shelter. Um, and these are our numbers, because I think there's some rumors going, I don't want to say rumors, there's just some straight misinformation being spread on social media about what a no-kill shelter is, which a couple of weeks ago that I, I stated that we're a no-kill shelter, and I still stand behind that regardless of the misinformation being spread. I want to give the numbers for January, and Tina, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We took in a hundred and twenty-seven dogs or puppies. We had forty-one adopted to the public. We had six returned to the owner. We had seventy-five transferred to various fosters that we work with in the county. We had three euthanized medically, and we had eleven euthanized because of behavior. Um, our, so with, with those numbers, our live release for January was a hundred and twenty-two. Our organization, um, reports this data to a, a nationwide, a nationwide-recognized organization called Best Friends on a monthly basis. I'm looking at you, Tina, and you nod yes or no if I say something wrong. Um, but they give, they take those, our statistics monthly, and they calculate that annually. And what is considered nationwide is a no-kill shelter is if you're euthanizing less than ten percent of the, uh, dogs that come into your shelter, and we are certainly below that number. Um, with that being said, the only time, we have never euthanized an animal at our shelter, because there was, the, unless it was medically necessary, um, and that's under the supervision of a veterinarian who makes that determination, or if the animal is determined to be un, um, to be unable to be rehabilitated by a veterinarian or by court order, which by the way, when the county gets a court order, unlike some organizations, um, out there, we follow that court order. When we have a court order, we follow it. Some organizations do not, and I just want to put that out there as well. So, um, w, we have never put an animal down, euthanized an animal at our shelter, other than the reasons I just stated. We have numerous animals over the last couple of years who have spent over a hundred days, certainly thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, and over a hundred days at our shelter, um, that were healthy animals. Um, we have an, we have a dog at our shelter right now that's been there over a hundred and eighty days. So, I, I just wanted to clarify, um, some misinformation that's being put out about our animal shelter. And again, I restate, we, according to the national statistics, we are a no-kill shelter. And I, and I'll say this, I'm not going to debate with anybody on Facebook or social media. My office number is five-seven-four-three-thousand. Any rescue, thank you, Danny, any rescue or anybody who wants to discuss this can call my office, set up an appointment, and I'll be glad to sit down and meet with you and discuss this any further. With that, I'll yield to Tina, if, Tina, if there's anything I've left out or anything you would like to add to what I've said today, you're free to do so.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would first like to give kudos to the staff of Mobile County Animal Shelter. These staff members, these individuals work tirelessly to balance protecting animals' lives and protecting the public. So, uh, they are some of the hardest-working, most dedicated civil servants I've ever encountered in, encountered.
Absolutely.
Um. And, and I can speak to the last five years, because I, I've, I've looked at the statistics for the last five years, at least the last five years, and during that time, Mobile County Animal Patrol has obtained and achieved and sustained the, that, that no-kill status, and will continue to work really hard at it. Um, I did want to take a moment, kind of off this topic a little bit, but I wanted to kind of restate something I've talked, said on February sixth, if you recall, um, at that conference meeting, the County Commission Conference Meeting on the sixth, um, I asked the Commission to, um, authorize terminating a rescue, uh, placement partner agreement with the Milo Foundation, and I did that because, and, and I'll just say it again, I've lost confidence in the Milo Foundation's capacity to safely place animals in Mobile County homes. Just want to make sure that, that was clear on the record, and, and I stand behind the work of Mobile County Animal Patrol every day.
One other thing I would like to add, it's also been reported that our animal shelter was, um, unsupervised or, Tina, what was the words that were used? Without supervision.
Without management.
Without management for a year. Absolutely false. That is absolutely false. Um, in, in times that we have not had a director of the animal shelter, uh, we had one leave, uh, because of illness, but let me, Tina and Matthew are always, always, always managing and supervising that animal shelter regardless of who the director is. It's never been, it was reported that we went a year unsupervised or, or unmanaged, and that is absolutely false as well. Thank you, Tina.
I appreciate you clarifying where we are, and, and you're absolutely right. We have reached no-kill status, and I think a lot of work, and, and we strive every day, the, the animal shelter does, and the county administration, to keep improving and improving, because the, the, what we want to do is to be able to place these animals and rehome them, and, and they've been through enough stress, and, and so they deserve to have good homes, and that is our, that is our goal entirely. And, and I would remind everyone that within the last year, we have started a, a foster program, and for anybody who is interested and willing, contact the Mobile County Animal Shelter, and we can, we can make that happen. If you're thinking about adopting an animal and you're not sure, the place to begin is by fostering. And so, we encourage you to do that. It really helps our numbers. It brings those down. There's often overcrowding at the shelter, and so these programs of, of adoption, uh, when we have these adoption events and, and fostering, go a long way to help, because it's, it's, it's a problem that we continue every day, but we do our very best, and the animal shelter staff certainly does, and kudos to them. So, what is the number, Tina? What, who should, how should they get in touch if people are interested?
In fo, oh, I'm sorry.
In fostering, in the fostering, I'm sorry.
That number is not in my head. It's on the website, though.
It's on the Mobile County Animal Shelter website, so please be sure and check that out if you're interested. Thank you.
So, I'd just like to thank everyone who worked so hard to make, uh, Sunday's opening event at, um, Chickasabobe Park, as spectacular as it was. You know, that, that three-year period was a very difficult three-year period for a lot of reasons. We had COVID, and then when we had to shut the park, we had, uh, employees who weren't sure what the status was going to be, and our team had to work together to keep up morale, keep them encouraged. And I think yesterday, to see them there as excited as they were, our staff excited about it being open, I think they felt like it was worth it. And a lot of what happened at Chickasabobe over those last three years happened under the ground, where nobody could see what was going on, but we knew it had to happen. And so, um, I just want to say thank you for, for hanging in there and just plugging away, and, you know, three times with having to reject bids because they were too high and not getting discouraged, just going back to the norm or going back, going back. And I, I hope that you got a sense of satisfaction yesterday when it was open to say, well, it was worth it, that what we endured to get here today, that it was worth it. That's what I felt. And, um, I had a good time, and, uh, my dance partner here, I look forward to the next time that we can take the floor.
Tina, you got that video? Could you, uh, put it on us? No, I'm kidding. Don't put that, do not put that on any screen. If anybody posted on social media.
Join me in saying thank you to, to the team that made Chickasabobe happen.
Let, let, I want to add to that, and, um, all of you guys sitting down here, it looks like Tina does everything around here, doesn't it? Uh, her and, her and her team did a fantastic job, and I, and that's recognized, but also, you know, all, all this vision that comes in with these parks, um, I want to give Commissioner Ludgood a round of applause. I know she doesn't like recognition, but this, the vision behind this, what Tina and them put together was her vision, and I'm going to tell you, anyone who wasn't there yesterday, make plans to visit Chickasaboe Park. It is beautiful and super nice. They've got a, uh, not only a playground, uh, they, they're camping coming in the future. There's a beach there that'll be open this summer, if I understood correctly, and also a, uh, some walking and biking trails and, uh, an eighteen-hole disc golf, uh, course there too. So, let's give, uh, Commissioner Ludgood a hand. How about that?
Do we have an executive session?
I think we have a.
We do. We have an executive session, Commissioner, to talk about matters of economic development, as well as one matter related to buying, selling of real property, and also like to bring a very quick matter about threatened or potentially pending litigation. I would certify those are appropriate reasons to go in executive session of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, and further certify and approve of Mr. Dewitt. I am a licensed practicing lawyer in the State of Alabama. I'd estimate the meeting would be no more than thirty minutes. There'll be no need to come back out of the executive session today to vote on.
Before we vote on that, I think we have an Indigent Care Board meeting today.
Yes, we do.
We'll recess this meeting and.
Correct.
Adjourn from executive.
That is correct.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, that motion was to recess, correct?
And, and of course, adjourning from the executive session now coming back.
Okay.
Now you can go into your indigent care board meeting.
Righty.
Indigent care board meeting for February twenty-fourth.
I think we need a motion to recess.
I think, yeah.
That vote was for the executive session. Now we need a motion to recess before we begin the indigent.
Motion to recess.
I move to recess this meeting to go into, to go to conduct our indigent care board meeting and then recess from our executive session following that.
Second.
I mean, did I say recess? I meant adjourns. Adjourn. Sorry.
Now, second the motion.
Item one, approve minutes of the meeting of January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five?
Did we call the, I'm sorry. Do we need to call the indigent care board meeting to order?
I'd like to call to order the February twenty-fourth indigent care board meeting.
One.
What was I doing?
I don't know.
It's a team effort here.
We're all just waiting it. Let's go.
We'll, we'll get there. One. Approved minutes of the meeting of January twenty-seventh?
Some move.
Second.
Two. Accept report from Mobile County Commission of the Balance and Indigent Care Fund as of January thirty-first. Funds available, one hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Some move.
Second.
Three. Approved request for motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Okay. I think we can move now.